I don't want all one other.
Yes, exactly.
Oh, is that?
Okay. Okay. Will I join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judy, I don't see. Just in on you.
Okay.
Yes, on that till she comes?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move forward. The first on the agenda was the on drive to be held, we're gonna have a representative from and cross to talk to us about it, but that's wait for them. So we'll start with the outdoor assembly permit. We have a number of applications before us. So with the first one is Cornell Cooperative Extension, would like to have a fundraiser at the Ramshead Inn.
Yeah, it's the twenty-third, July twenty.
July twenty-third from.
The event is from one to five.
One to five, okay.
They have a rain date of possibly the twenty-fourth. I don't think we're supposed to get.
Pretty sure. Okay. Sure.
They're requesting a noise exemption. And it's for a charitable event, so it qualifies. And they're going to raise at least three thousand dollars for the charity. Yeah. Yes. Share.
Okay.
Do you have the hours available?
One to five. Oh, okay.
So that's really.
It's from one to five.
Isn't this application as far as is for the waiver of noise.
For the noise or nets, yeah.
Okay.
Christina, can I screen share?
End up by seven PM.
Mm-hmm.
Go through the whole thing.
What do you expect to attend in such a?
Like a sale on tickets because it's close to the shop look like.
Yeah, it's it's resaled by.
What was that?
Yeah, it's it's hundred fifty people. They sent out invitations and now they're gonna do valet parking so that they know everything's neat and organized. They're encouraging carpooling and using the shuttles.
Or, I'm sorry, just come down a little bit. I just want to see something about restrooms. Restroom facilities provided on site within the building. Okay.
Yeah, they're in the premises. So it's a hundred and fifty people in the lawn of the Ramshead.
Mm-hmm.
They're setting up kind of around the lawn. They're gonna have different tables for different which they serve vendors like on the map here.
Yeah.
So they're gonna have a live outdoor music. The band is gonna be set up on the tennis court. You can see there, I think that's the tennis court and it's facing the building. So it's not facing out to the water, so it's kind of containing the noise in that fashion. And then it's just kind of like a lawn event, so it won't be too crazy, I think. But it's during the day, it's from one to five.
Okay, and we're not gonna be there.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions?
Um. It doesn't have any conflicts with other events that might overtax the police and EMS. There's nothing else big happening that weekend. I'm sorry, Meg, what's the date again? The twenty-fourth?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. Um. Is there any? Yes, because it's my dates twenty-fourth, right?
Right.
Okay. Um. No conflicts with other events that cause vehicular pedestrian congestion in that particular area. This is the first event in this location that's requested a noise exemption or permit, so that's acceptable. It's a venue that's created for public gathering, so there's no conflict with ordinary public use of the land or the facilities involved. And whether the applicant or owner of the premises at which the subject gathering is to be held has been convicted or failure to comply with the terms of any other outdoor assembly permits issued in the last three years. No, I don't believe so. So.
I see Kim Tratolos online. Kim's the manager of the aquaculture program for Cornell Cooperative Extension. Kim, anything you want to talk about this event?
Hi, thanks for having me and I'm sorry I couldn't make it in person. I had a a work session in Southampton, so I would have liked to have been there in person. But yeah, we're we're I've been working at the Ramshead trying to promote aquaculture in Shell in Shelter Island and so this is a fundraiser to promote our new hatchery and we were hoping to get a lot more exposure to the town of Shelter Island with with growing oysters and mostly scallop. I want to concentrate on scallops, so we're so we're kind of upping the game a little bit, and that's what this fundraiser is for.
Do you do these in other towns also, these fundraisers, or just kind of unique?
I I I have quite a bit of fundraising going on. And that's, I mean, unfortunately, that's how we 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 have to bring in the funding for a lot of a lot of issues we do. We have other venues to to bring money in, but fundraisers are actually a nice way to bring in new new partnership to our causes. So we are doing, we do the celebration every year, which is a fundraiser in in Greenport. We do a couple other big fundraisers, but for for my program, the Suffolk Project and Aquaculture Training, we've been in pretty good shape for not having an abundance of of fundraising, but this, I think, is going to be a a nice session to to open up some some new venues for the island.
Okay. Stephen, you have any questions?
Uh, no, Mr. But.
Chief, you have anything?
No, I have nothing.
Okay. Kim, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go back to number one on the agenda. I see Christine Root is here now. Christine, you want to give us a, you're on mute, and if you could just
Hello, everyone. I usually I try not to unmute until you're ready, ready for me to go, so there's no interference, but hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Sorry, I'm working remote today on on and off the road today, but um I am here to talk about the upcoming blood drive. Last January, unfortunately, due to another COVID surge, we could not run in the winter, so we've been trying to get back to this new normal again, so we're happy to be back July twenty-first from one to seven and we're 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 doing the same thing as last summer. We're giving out a box of Girl Scout cookies of your choice to anyone that comes down along with other snacks and refreshments. And another thing I was going to bring up is Town of Shelter Island, like speaking of new businesses and all of that, if if you ever know anyone or you could speak to Judy Maringer, who's she's amazing and she really helps coordinate this. You know, sometimes we work with local businesses even for our blood drives, if they want to promote something new or give out a coupon or a voucher. We work with, I always work with local places too, but I'm not super familiar with the island just yet. But, oh, and my family friend went to your firework show this past Saturday and they they loved it. By the way, I didn't know you guys do that there every summer, but um so we're just looking to also network with you guys and we're trying to reach younger donors because many of our donors coming in, our dedicated donors, you know, forty and up, but we are having trouble reaching the younger crowd, so if you know anyone I can connect with that has a great social media presence in the area or some or any ideas you can bring bring back to me, that would be great because, you know, we are trying to get more people to come out and get involved and the pandemic has made that pretty difficult and we've lost a lot of donors in the process and a lot of opportunities to get our message out to people, so so we are going to be here on the twenty-first again from one to seven in the EMS building. And anyone who can help promote it to the town, it's much appreciated. Most people don't tell us the reason they don't donate or do or we do surveys all the time and the number one answer is they didn't know about it or like know enough about it or this or that, so word of mouth throughout the community is huge. And does does anyone have any questions for the blood drive for me?
With the local business, do you have a program you deal with them or just you know, would you want to be in touch with them or you want us to try to do it or?
Whatever you think is easy, like I usually, sometimes I go to local businesses myself and I give them my card and and ask if they want to participate in the upcoming blood drive, but whatever you think is best, I'd love to try to network a little more throughout the community.
Good. I think that's something we could show.
Yeah, and it promotes their business too. We have, like, sometimes we work with local breweries across the the North Fork and we do like, and we offer like an under twenty-one or an other alternative, but we offer pint these pint for pint vouchers and you get to go and check out these new breweries and stuff or or you get an option for like a snack or a soft drink too, but it's it brings them new customers too, so they, a lot of small businesses actually really benefit from it and they they I get good feedback.
Okay. Anybody else?
They can even sponsor, like help sponsor a drive if they want to, like, you know, we could add Town of Shelter Island and like their logo for their business on somewhere on the flyer, like, you know, there's ways that we help each other.
Okay. All right, we will pursue that and I just want to second what you said about Judy. I know you know Judy does a lot of things behind the scenes, but
Yes.
I want to take in charge of this one.
She's great. She's really helpful. She's been doing this for a long time. And like I said, we're we're also just trying to get back to this new normal and get some and get some more donors, especially the younger crowd, so I'm trying to come up with ways to get a social media presence in the area and stuff like that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for all you do and we will see you on the twenty-first.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Have a great summer.
Okay, we'll go back to our outdoor assembly permit. The next one is the Shelter Island Democrats.
Jerry, can I just interrupt for a minute? I did get word from my front office that the meeting wasn't being broadcast.
Christina's, it is, it is being broadcast.
Apparently there's some technical difficulties that we're recording it and it won't be live, but it'll be.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thanks.
I don't understand, but we have people on, oh, you mean on the YouTube station? Because we have people on Zoom.
Yes, understood, on Zoom, on YouTube, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you, Chief. So the next one is the Shelter Island Democrat Social at Wade's Beach.
We're gonna do that, the Shelter Island fireworks, we'd be happy to let drive on our social media channels.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah.
Can you stop in and see Julie?
If you just mentioned a Judy, Kat, that would be great. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next is a social Shelter Island Democrats. Do we need a permit for this to use? What are they doing?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll let Kat present, which.
Okay.
So we're looking to have a social gathering. There's no amps, there's no music. It's really just a chance to meet some of our summer folks and second homeowners, have some tacos and enjoy beautiful beach. So it would be from four to six thirty, but the town cleaned up, we're staying at seven. And it's just the permission to bring a few tables so you can set some stuff up, have people sit. We would bring some food and kind of just gather.
Okay, so so it's a social gathering, not a fundraiser?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, the last time we we did a wedding that was about to use a pavilion, so the superintendent of public works put up signage beforehand. So and also are we starting to get into a precedent of summer use of the pavilion, so just sort of throw that out there. I don't think we got any negative feedback on the wedding. And this is a Thursday night, I believe.
Is it Thursday? It's a Thursday night?
It's a Thursday and I like, it's short, you know, it's not like a whole garden for the whole day.
Yeah, the idea was that it would not be the peak time when the beachgoers would be there.
Right, right.
Right.
And this would be the second event at Wade's Beach and then you have the paddleboard race, which is like the third event.
Right, yes, I'm just, you know, kind of balance public use versus in a group use.
To keep that front of mind each time we evaluate.
Yeah, yeah, right. Just need to let Brian know to signage up, that it's signage up, so that it's four thirty, third out by four, I guess.
Three, they set up at three.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
So there's no noise exemption being raised, it's just used public property.
Yep.
We got the application fee.
Mic and small amp.
Yeah, one mic and small, small amp in the covered area.
Yeah, scratch that.
Okay.
There's no amps.
Okay.
Like loudspeakers.
Just by the main voice.
Need to stick it in.
Hi. Um, did we have, we have insurances. There's no real need for traffic control, just already established parking.
Is there any way to know how many you expect or?
Yeah, I'm gonna send out an invitation so that we get some RSVPs specifically, so when we order tacos, we have enough. But we're expecting fifty to seventy-five people.
Oh, wow.
And the hope is just to kind of get people meeting in a time that's not, we're not like in a in a time crunch for an issue and kind of meet people who are perhaps registered to boot out here but are not here parts of part of the time.
Yeah.
There's no lighting because it's starting to day. And they're gonna use the bathroom facilities, so just using this and taking the trash with them.
Right.
I have in the application.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey. Yeah, questions? Kat, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for
Great job.
Fireworks display and thank you for offering to help with the.
Yeah, that's awesome. I think we guys did great, a great tradition to have that.
It was very nice, nicely done.
The town did an incredible job. That is, they did amazing, so thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, next on the list, we had an application for a wedding at Sunset Beach, just for the actual ceremony, not that.
Oh, a reception.
Reception there.
All right, so we'll skip that one, we'll go to another one and then when he gets on, we'll do.
We'll jump to, okay.
Okay, next is a jazz concert at Sylvester Manor. Who's who's speaking?
Hi, Steve.
Hi, everybody. Hi, Stephen, Sylvester Manor. So we have, what we're proposing here is a concert on the thirty-first, that's a Sunday. From doors open at four, but the concert begins at five and goes until eight PM. It's actually a three-part concert. The first is Native American musicians from the Shinnecock Indian Nation. That's like part one from about five to five-thirty. Second part is classical music in the garden likely, and then the last piece is a jazz component jazz concert, which will not be creekside, it'll actually be away from the creek.
Three to three different locations.
Three different locations, hopefully, right? Alice and I, we're still sort of working this out. It might be one location, but it won't be creekside, so it'll be pulled back a little bit from the water. And it'll end at eight, yeah, that's right. You know, we're obviously we did a lot of cultural programming pre-pandemic. We haven't done kind of try this concert out. It works, I think, complements well our history and heritage work and sort of the different cultures they're trying to represent in our Sylvester Manor, so that's neat. We're also working with three different organizations, so we're kind of the host site. One is, as I said, the Shinnecock Indian Nation, another is a classical not-for-profit on the North Fork, Rites of Spring. And the third is The Loft, which is the jazz concert component, which is located in Stony Brook. So it's it's super interesting and and we're, you know, we're just, as I said, we're sort of trying something new. And and this is going to be sort of our main concert for this summer. Maybe we can pull something off a little bit later in the summer, but this is probably gonna be the main thing.
Okay.
Very much.
We did not submit for a noise exemption in this. I don't, you know, again, this is where it was a little, I wasn't quite sure what to do and be happy to, you know, take your guidance, but first of all, we didn't think it was totally necessary based on the kind of music, but and the hour, and also because it's pulled back from the creek.
It's really.
It works on your private nature property, but, you know, I believe that, you know. But we are all not.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And you're eligible for it.
It's a fundraiser.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and it is all, obviously, all that money is going towards towards the, in fact, we're splitting the proceeds between the the various organizations, so.
Yeah, so it'll be over a thousand dollars to each organization, so that's.
That's.
It'd be more comfortable.
Doing the noise grant.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine. We honestly, we.
Yeah, because jazz music is not exempted as opposed to bluegrass and credits. So.
Yeah, so, yeah, I have gone here to do a noise exemption, it's a charitable event and it's music, it's a musical performance, so then it requires the permit, so.
That's fine. We're expecting between a hundred and fifty to two hundred people, I think I mentioned that. We obviously have public restrooms on site. They may also get porta potties if.
And even your parking.
And parking, correct. We will have no problem with that. We've had three hundred and fifty white people.
Any questions?
No. No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Okay. Did Stephen leave already?
Oh, he's right here, Chief.
Yeah, my only, my only comment regarding the noise exemption is that the number of them. So Stephen, you know, we've had this open conversation before. I don't mind having it open publicly that that, you know, this will be the second request for a noise exemption, so at some point, the board may decide that a certain amount is is enough considering the neighbors and and the location and all of that, so that that would be my only comment was regarding the noise.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah, I think previously we discussed that.
We have.
Yes.
I mean, is there a feeling from the board as to like a a number, not that I'm even?
There's nothing in the code.
There's nothing.
There's nothing in the code, yeah.
Says they should weigh the frequency.
Right. And 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 that will be a hard one. Like you said, this one might be benign.
Yeah, but I'd be happy to have a, every other week have an exemption for music.
I mean.
The time of the day is big and I think most of these being the late afternoon, early thing is is the big difference for me. So it's not the number, it's the end. The fact that you're moving it back from the water, you know, it's not gonna echo as much across to the neighbors. But I, we worked in the backyard last time, last concert, then I came over and joined it. It was fine. The noise level was was very tolerable.
I think that depends on the frequency. If you're doing like.
Yeah.
I mean, that gets success, but yeah.
And amplification will will actually point away from the water, it'll be pointing in.
Yeah, great.
Well, good. Thanks again, Stephen. Okay, next on the list is Mr. Tom Spodick. Tom's getting married. Come on up, Tom.
Wait, were we gonna go back?
Poor guy.
Yeah, yeah, he must add on, so we'll do him next, we can, so he'll be first.
Tom, he's getting married. What's his date, Tom?
Saturday.
It's Saturday.
Sixteen.
And he's he's done everything with the Tudor Taylor's Island Association. So I kind of thought that's all he had to do. I didn't realize he had to come to us also. This, you know, the association, you know, to handle everything.
Foundation.
Yeah. Foundation.
Yeah.
But it's still town proper, so I understand.
So what are the plans, Tom?
Right outside.
We have actually Taylor's Island meeting this morning, the committee met. And there are a couple of the members mentioned how dry it is out there. Grass is dry, you know, burnt to a crisp, it's a wood structure. So they were just wondering or insisting that nobody be smoking and there'd be no fire pits. Are you, how are you cooking? That was, these are all questions that came up this morning.
It was a charcoal grill.
Oh.
How was you located? I was out yesterday.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was there yesterday.
Down by the entrance point at the.
Yes, and that and that is
Oh, that's.
That is the safest spot. It's all sandy and it's it's cleared out there. They were cutting the lawn yesterday, by the way. The guys came over and they cut the lawn and prepared. I didn't know the wedding was happening, but I guess in preparation for the wedding. But yeah, great spot. How many people, Tom?
It's capped at a hundred here at about eighty-six.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's enough. It's all water access.
Correct.
What's the weather forecast? Can you get it?
Sunny.
Sunny day. All right.
Okay, so they have two tents. One's just for food, it's ten by ten, and then there's another one that's sixty-four by chairs with ceremony. Diagram. So the gray tent is the big one, the orange one is the food tent, then the
Yellow.
The yellow is the porta potty and then the blue is where they're gonna get married, so it's the arch with the chairs.
Tom, you want to point out where you you're gonna station the grills?
Well, where the red is, if you just move it back a few feet, it's the sand.
And that's sand.
Oh, where the sand is.
Yeah.
Is there any way you can use propane or is it just really?
Oh, we have to contact the chef.
The chef. Yeah. If it's not too much trouble, it probably would be a better idea, but, you know, I also know we're very last minute, so.
Some buckets of salt water.
Yeah, yeah, really. I think we're gonna, they were actually planning on having an extended hose out there, just be aware.
There, the water, there's work.
Yeah, and I know that they were gonna add more hoses hoses, so just be aware of where it is, maybe tell the chef. And just in case.
Is all the stuff coming down by boat out there or is it coming?
Uh, driven up, starting on Thursday.
Okay, low tide, it is watched out, okay.
Yeah.
Actually, yesterday I was there during low tide because it's a full moon coming up. You could actually take a vehicle right right out. I mean, it's wide, it's wide enough for a vehicle and it was firm enough.
And I'm driven up, circle.
Yes, yeah, I was just there yesterday with my grandson.
Great.
Okay, and again, if the foundation's comfortable with.
Yeah, they are. It's just that.
Very protective of it.
Yeah.
Okay, congratulations, good luck.
Congratulations, Tom, I guess.
Nice, Tom.
You're a lucky man. Anyway, yeah, we're free.
Stop it.
Yeah, really.
Okay, we're gonna move back up to
You can't even make lunch.
See, Sunset Beach, riding on Crescent Beach.
Jonathan's.
Jonathan's here.
Hey, guys, how's it going?
We we spoke about this earlier, right? Can you, can we speak about this?
Um.
A month ago.
Yeah. So this is just a formal approval.
Yeah.
So let us know what your plan is.
Sure, so we're having the wedding actually at Sunset Beach, so we were just hoping to have the reception just across the way on on Crescent Beach, so.
But the other way around. You're gonna get married on the beach and have the reception at Sunset Beach.
Yes, exactly. But yeah, super minimally invasive, just want to, you know, kind of have our guests cross the street really quick, witness the ceremony. There will be some, you know, music playing, but then, you know, immediately after the ceremony, they'll be going right back to Sunset Beach for celebration.
Do we have a map?
I have, but you want to do chairs and a platform on the beach?
Yeah, exactly.
What day and time is this? I couldn't find the.
It's September eighteenth. From six thirty to seven thirty.
So it's after the season.
So it's after the season.
Okay. And they're gonna set up and clean up the same day.
What was the time, Meg?
Six thirty to seven thirty.
How many chairs, do you think?
Hundred and twenty.
Oh, wow.
That's what I have. It's two blocks of sixty with an aisle in the center and then a platform.
Yep.
So I guess the obvious question is, police, when they're crossing the road. Chief.
Yeah, I I have a few questions if you if you if you're deferring to me now, Jerry, I'm so so for me, how how are you powering it? Are you using generators on the beach for that event?
I I think we're just gonna use a portable speaker, so nothing too crazy, like essentially a bigger version of what someone would, you know, bring to the beach if they were listening to music with a group of friends or something like that, but.
So so bat- battery powered, no extension cords across the street?
Correct.
Right, what's the size of the tent? That'll be on the beach?
I'm not, we're not having a tent, we're just having a group, so we'd only do a tent if there was rain, so we haven't planned for that just yet. If it does rain, we would likely probably move it somewhere inside Sunset Beach or to the. Um, if it does rain, we would likely probably move it somewhere inside Sunset uh, beach or to the back wine garden area that they have there just um, cause the rain would kinda defeat the purpose of dragging everyone out there.
Right. And, and, and that stage area, uh, Councilwoman Lawson had mentioned, you know, that you're talking about a stage. I'm just looking at what you have in your sketch. So uh, we're just trying to get a sense of this, the size and scope of that.
Yeah, of course. That would be like ten by ten, essentially enough to have, have me, my fiance, uh, a rabbi and uh, you know, a few other immediate family members, my, our, our parents and siblings.
Okay.
How about traffic, chief?
Yeah, I, I, I really don't see it being an issue on that weekend. I think it's the last weekend, uh, Sunset Beach. The hotel is open. I, I, I'm assuming they're concluding with your uh, with your wedding. Um, so I, I generally that time of year is, is relatively easy. Um, and if we had to put a traffic control officer down there, it wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Hey, any other questions?
No.
Okay, Jonathan, thank you very much. Congratulations and good luck.
Ah, amazing, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for the time today and uh, thank you for letting us, you know, host on the island. It's a, it's a magical place. It's where we, we fell in love and that's why we're, we're coming back to you guys. So thank you so much for uh, letting us host there. Cheers.
Thanks again.
Good weather.
Okay.
I, I think we really should preface this though, because it's outside the season is really the key. Uh, just for public consumption, I, I think we should really be strong on that. On it, this isn't the kind of place that we can allow this during the season. It's outside the season and it's gonna be a, you know, relatively short um, time zone where he's getting married and then moving back onto the private property.
Yeah, I think that was one of the key things we uh, took into consideration was the season. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, don't we take down the stop sign there and apply the Pridwin on like September fifteenth? So because this is the eighteenth, maybe we should leave it up another week, just so that way people have to stop in case there's traffic going back.
Yeah, but, and they, they may really look that because the Pridwin now, remember it's gonna be open, I know, and, and stop sign down there as well. So I think as, as long as both places are open for business, stop signs have to kinda remain, especially during the nicer weather of September, beginning of October. Definitely. Yeah, gee, we should talk to Brian about that.
I, I, I think it's a matter of code and that would really defer to Kylie on that. It, it has to be, it should be in code.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Easy enough. Okay. Next we have on the list is Tom Hoshagen who's gonna come and uh, talk to about what I referred to the other day and people looked at me like I was uh. A hood daddy.
Couple of years ago, um, just before the, we got into the whole COVIDness, we uh, thought about putting a uh, just random concert down there and just to, for the, for the reason for nothing other than just to have a, you know, a beach party. And went along fine and then COVID sort of ramped up and put the guidelines to it. So we're just gonna sort of revisit that. Um, there's no, there's, there's no fundraiser. There's no uh, reason for having it other than just to have a beach party in the middle of the summer, in the middle of the week. So we, our band, the Baccana County Ramblers is going to play. Um, just, and we've got sponsorship for the band. And uh, yeah, South Fair is for the day, Tom. Uh, it's gonna be the tenth for the rain day to the seventeenth.
August.
August, August tenth.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. We're gonna do it as a Wednesday awaits. Uh, the timeframe will be from four thirty till seven thirty. We're looking at, you know, getting pretty dark by seven thirty, eight o'clock at that time of the year. So uh, I only have a couple of questions. Um, Cliff Clark is uh, South Fair is gonna, you know, put some money towards uh, paying our guys. Lisa and I got paid for free, but we're gonna pay our guys. And uh, he would like it if it was, if he was able to write the check to the town rather than um, than to me or somebody else, just so they get the tax benefit. It doesn't add up too much, but still.
But we're food, we're.
Tax benefit. We're not a charity.
Through the recreation department. So I don't know if that helps.
Yes. I'm not sure what he, what he.
Yeah. I'm pretty sure it's not a tax benefit because we're not a charity. But, you know, right? But it would be, if, to the recreation department, it seems to me, right? I mean.
So could he write a check to the recreation department uh, for it and then have the recreation department pay the man? That's the, that's the question. I don't like that.
George, this is yours special.
Yeah, I'd wanna just double check the orders. I think it can be a tax deductible, like, like when you write a check to municipality. Um, usually we don't do that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't like it, unfortunately. Like, I like the intent of it, but it's just gonna get a little.
Yeah, cause they're designating it for specific.
Basically laundering. Money. No, but uh, it just, no, no, I, again, the intent's good, but I, I think we should not do it that way. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll, I'll tell them that. Uh, I've also asked Brian Sherman if uh, he could throw a supply or something we could put under the van. Um, you know, in front of the uh, bathroom. Just where we planned having, having it set up. We will not um. For him and anybody from getting to the bathrooms that are still in, in, in full use. Um, I've also um, asked the islander if they would like to put a food truck down there and they're, they're on it. They wanna do it.
Great, great.
So um, just to.
But we need to talk about that, but go ahead.
Okay.
We, well, no, uh, Amber and I discussed it yesterday. Uh, because we have a, a, an agreement with them that to go to Wade's Beach, uh, Crescent Beach. Uh, we felt it was, uh, cause we denied someone the other day.
Right.
Uh, to talk one time.
For one time about.
So this, this is a, you know, a business that does business with this food truck.
Would be relocating them from Crescent Beach to Wade's Beach for one day. Does that fall under?
And that was one of the original things we talked about when they first applied, that they wanna go back and forth beaches. So we were open to that.
Right.
Like, you know, which is one of the other. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, says, well, how come you denied one and you're allowing the other? These people, they already have an agreement with the town.
They already have an agreement. And it's also, you know, I just have to bring this up. It matters. July, the, the fireworks is a different scene. It's insane.
There's a lot of cars, a lot of people. I, I don't think you're proceeding this as being a, a blowout.
No, no.
You know?
Not, not a blowout stack.
So I, I find it not less.
Well, we're, we're supposed to stop, you know, and people who can plan on bringing their family down for, you know, a picnic or whatnot. And, and if they don't wanna bring food and they wanna buy food, food truck is fine. Yeah, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, then, that's it. We're gonna have some, again, we'll have some posters put up around the town, designating that it's. Which departments. And also that um, South Fair is um, is one of the sponsors for the, you know, the sound bands.
Okay.
But, but should, should be fun. Um, just uh, we deal, over its bands, no, nobody, you know, going to the crowd looking for money. Just, just have some fun.
It's a great idea.
I have the screen up for the, where the stage is, the pop-up tent.
Please don't make fun of my drawings.
I was gonna say, obviously this is not to scale, but it looks very close. And so my concern is just accessibility to that bathroom.
We'll, we'll make sure it's out front up. I'm gonna do that. We're only gonna need one, one ten circuit to power everything. So we, we don't need any generators or anything like that. Um, and uh, I'm gonna get a couple of pop-ups from the Lions Club, I hope, you know, to, you know, put us up front there. And the, the stage area, there was, that's an inset there. It's just, you know. Bands usually can't get enough amps, so they just like put in as many as they possibly can. But it's just for the, you know, silly guitar players like me that, that need their fan. But the PA is just gonna be out towards the beach, towards the water. Um, and uh, the nearest neighbors in that direction would be Nyack. So we're not really worried about it.
Hey, anything else? Chief, you have anything on this one?
Yeah, alcohol.
No, it's BYOB. We're not doing any, no beer, no foot in sale.
Okay, so, so no, no liquor license, not selling or giving away alcohol.
No, not giving away alcohol, not, not doing anything of the sort.
Okay. I, I didn't see an answer to the question on the expected number of people. I see you expecting twenty-five cars. So for me, what do you need a food truck for if there's only gonna be twenty-five cars?
It's uh, I really don't know, uh, chief, how many people are gonna come. So.
Yeah.
Just uh, sort of like the first time we ever did a concert in Shelter Island School, we never knew how many people, then two hundred people showed up. So I don't know. We'll see. Um, but.
How big is that thing last year for the thanking the town people for the COVID?
Yeah.
Uh, there were a hundred, there were several hundred people that showed up. I was, it was well, well attended. We had the band, you know.
Right, right. Yeah, sure.
Couple bands playing. Uh, it was a nice event, but it was well, I, I think, you know, you'll, I dealt with quite a few people. Why, why?
Part of the reason I ask, Tom, is that if the parking lot fills, then what? There's, there's no street parking there. It's posted no parking around that bend. So. I, I, I just wanna make sure that we talk through s- some of it a little bit. I, I, I mean, how are you promoting this? Is it uh, being promoted just on the island?
Yeah, um, the town website and we're gonna have posters around the island, but not anywhere else. So, I mean, we're not advertised. You get off island. So um, you know, it's pretty much just island or event, you know, it's a vacation or event.
Jim, Jim, what's the capacity for the parking lot?
I, I think it's in the eighties, Jim.
I think you're right.
Yep.
So on a normal weekday in August, would you say that the lot is a third full, a half full?
Yeah, so, so I would say about uh, half. Um, it, at that, you know, a half to a little bit more, maybe two thirds full. So he could definitely handle the twenty, the, the additional twenty-five cars. At that time of the evening, it starts to wean out also. So, but Tom, don't misunderstand me. I'm, I'm not for or against what you're talking about. I'm just trying to have my head around um, capacity and, and tho- those kinds of things.
Yeah.
It's fluid as well, you know. If people don't have to come at four thirty, it's even seven thirty. They can just come and go whenever they want to. So, but figure that it would be like, if someone wants to come down for cocktails and then dinner, that they can, they can do that or they can just come down later on at night. Cause.
Tom, you had in the application that Shelter Island Rec Department, is this is a rec department sanctioned event?
Yes.
So it's a town, in essence, a town sanctioned event. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So yeah, whatever the police department needs to do, uh, just let us know.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Oh, don't forget to show two weeks. We, we can, we can, a week and a half.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is uh, YouTube channel procedures. I think this has to do with our town meetings, what we stream and what we record and how we have access to them.
Yeah, this is just one of those things. Um, I just wanted to ask about putting the comp plan videos on the YouTube channel.
What do we have on there now?
We only have the town board work sessions, meetings, zoning board and planning board.
So all the decision-making bodies.
Exactly. The paid decision-making bodies. So um, I've just, we've been getting a lot of foils and I've had a lot of requests to put the comp plan meetings on YouTube. And it kinda makes sense because we want public interaction. We want people to understand what's going on. Um, so we wanna make it easy. So I'm hoping that we could add those to the YouTube channel. And I do know that we're gonna have, depending on whether or not the governor extends the current, you know, video conferencing rules. Eventually, we're gonna have to transition and figure out how we're gonna handle those new rules. And then everything might have to go on YouTube. But um, just for now, I wanted to kind of reach the subject of just adding comp plan to the YouTube so that it's on there easily accessible.
Christina, how involved is that physically?
It's, I mean, it could be easily done. Um, it just uh. Could be easily done. Uh, it's just time component. That's all. I mean.
Cause we, do we already record the meetings?
We record them, yeah.
They're on SharePoint, the members.
But this is a live stream.
Right.
Right?
Oh, live? No, it's not live.
No, yeah. It could be that with live stream for zoning board planning. So it doesn't really matter. Like it just matters the setting.
Right.
Um, it just uh.
And are you asking?
I mean, this is just, it's not a big deal, but if it grows over, you know, more committees and boards, uh, we have to look at it more in a complex spectrum.
Right. That's why the media department has just decided to do with the paid boards, decision-making boards to start with. But if there's a lot of foil requests going on, then that is creating clerk time. So this, like she'll have the time to have, to spend the time to get them uploaded, but.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll save.
No, I, I did suggest to the comp plan that we should do that, but then, that's when we decided that we just need the paid, paid boards.
Yeah, I think the comp plan is a separate and distinct all to itself. And I think the more visible you can be and the more transparent you can be and getting, and getting people involved and knowledgeable about the comp plan, I think the better off you, you will be. I, I. So, so just so the public understands, every meeting is open through Zoom.
Yes.
But if you wanna see it after the fact.
Yes, correct. Well, that's the thing. It's not on YouTube. So they have to foil it. Yeah. Yeah. So we'd like it to be on YouTube so they don't have to foil as much because we are getting a lot of foil requests for the videos.
And do you want it to be live on YouTube or just available afterwards? Cause that does, like, that's like an extra added step for the clerk.
Right. I think, well, is it easier to, if you do it live, is it automatically on YouTube? So then it's one and done. Whereas if you, otherwise you have to put it on.
No interaction.
From YouTube. No, it's just.
No, it's like you, you preset it at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, you set it stream.
Right.
And then once it goes live, you just play live and then it's there in, I don't know, a few hours it takes until it's processed and it's there.
So that sounds like the most efficient way to do it.
It is.
So, yes, I would say.
It, it is, you know, afterwards it is. But you have an action before that. So.
Right, right. I mean, no matter what, yeah. Yeah. But it saves you from answering six or seven foil requests where you're downloading and uploading and, yeah.
And also.
But it's, you know, there are different, different people in, you know.
Yeah, involved in different stuffs.
Somebody else will have more work.
It, it broadens exposure in the audience because.
Right.
And they have.
He needs your live stream to live.
Yes. Yes. So, yeah, that would be my request is to do the live stream with the Zoom and. Well, and it's short term. It's only until the plan is complete and then.
For the other committees.
Oh, right. Yeah. Depending on your short term from your lips.
Mm-hmm.
Even any other. Legalese, we need.
Uh, no. As long as it's, I'm.
As long as we can make it work with the timing and everybody's, the demand's already on everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, then uh, just that ADA compliance with Kevin, I'm sure it's fine.
He, I mean, actually YouTube helps with that. Because YouTube has a live, I mean, has a transcript, like within a couple of days, there's a transcript available, which we didn't do before.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I think it's.
So.
Positive.
So I would like to amend the policy to include the comp plan.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda, I asked Joe to join us, Joe Penora. Uh, the Island Center Waste Water Treatment System. We're applying for some grants and funding. So we have to give a resolution to apply for him. Joe, you wanna uh, brief us on what it is we're applying for?
Yep. It's a town policy to approve uh, grant applications before they're submitted. And uh, so the applications before us are for uh, county and state provided funding for various um, clean water, groundwater type initiatives. Jennifer Messian Ohioan is our town contracted grants writer. She's prepared the applications on our behalf, as, as she has for, for many other projects. And so uh, the applications before the board now for approval are uh, geared towards funding of the municipal wastewater uh, project. So we're under a deadline with the state and county fiscal years to provide these applications by uh, mostly the end of the month and some uh, as late as September. But we're under that timeline. And so we're submitting these applications now based off the engineering report that, that we have uh, from Lombardo Associates.
And I have some numbers. Um, let me just see if I can do this right. Um, so, working with Jen and talking to Joe. Let's just see if I can. No, I've lost my mouse again. I'm having trouble today with.
I have it.
Okay. I just can't get myself to stop sharing. Okay, yeah, kick me out. Yes, please. Thanks. Sorry about that. Operator error. Um, but, just for a second, look at it.
Which go?
Okay. All right. So if you go to the next slide, Christina, the total project cost per Lombardo Associates at the moment is three million, one seventeen oh thirty. And we're applying for two um, grants. We're applying for a New York State Water Quality Improvement Program like grant, and that's to the tune of two hundred, two and a half million dollars. Our local match on that would be six hundred twenty-five thousand, cause it's. Our local match on that would be six hundred twenty five thousand because it's a seventy five, twenty five percent grant. The second grant that we're also applying for is from Suffolk County, the Water Quality Protection and Restoration Program. We're applying for two hundred and fifty thousand. The local match would be two hundred and fifty thousand. The the six twenty five, we can subtract the two fifty that's up the county because that's considered local funding for it. So it takes our six twenty five down by two hundred and fifty thousand. So if you go to the next screen, the total project cost minus the New York State grant because I said seventy five percent of the cost, so it's not quite the two and a half million needed. The Suffolk County grant would be two hundred and fifty thousand. So the town match is down to five hundred and twenty nine thousand, two fifty seven. The the probable source for that would be through our local W Q I rebate program. Because we've been, we've been fortunate with the sales over the past couple of years that we've got money there. I think to the tune of close to two million, one million has already been set aside for existing septic grants. So then we could use some other unallocated money at this point to cover this. We'd have to go through public hearing process in order to utilize this. But the, if you go back a screen, the the New York State Water Quality Improvement and also Suffolk County Water Quality Protection, so pretty confident that our local town program qualifies for using funds in this source. That's a school.
Just for some additional clarity on the number, since it's on the screen, the three point one million that's listed there is the total construction cost. That's not the phase of the project that we're in now for design services. That's the estimated construction cost for the full project. And the two point five million, it's as part of the New York State grant is lower than the three million because it only covers construction costs. And there are other construction design and inspection services that are not covered. And that that explains the gap between the the three and the and the two point five. There are some limits on what the New York State grant will cover as part of the full project.
And and for anyone that hasn't been involved or seen the reports on this, Joe estimates that the system we're putting in is the equivalent of a hundred and fifty individual, up to a hundred and fifty individual IA systems. So.
With better out, but.
Yeah.
You can drop it, Christina.
And also that aside from this project, you know, the school was planning their own septic replacement system to the tune of about one million dollars. So, you know, that that cost is already, or that cost would already have to be incurred by the town if this project didn't didn't go through.
The town as a whole.
The tax base.
The tax base as a whole, correct.
Yeah, that's kind of hard. Go ahead, Joe.
Oh, and I just wanted to emphasize too that this resolution is really more procedural for our grants policy rather than how it pertains to the project schedule itself.
Right. It gives her permission to apply for the grants, so we'll see how that resolves.
And also, go ahead.
At any time we apply for grant, we want to make sure the town board's on board with how are we going to pay for this?
Right.
So that's why.
Because we're committing.
Yes. And the reason, like, these are our costs now and we'll see that that's come out. Like as far as the school, yes, they were trying to, you know, pull together monies. It's all coming out of the same tax base. So if we can get it funded through these grants, we'll go that route. If some of this funding falls through, then we'll have to sit down with the school and say, okay, you were going to commit this. You know, do you have reserves or were you going to bond or, you know?
Or maybe they have access to monies, education monies that we don't, you know, the.
But at least initially, we have, like, these are where we're going to start to tap. But we won't probably go for the W town, W Q I grant until we know where these other two fall at.
Joe, could you just send us those numbers, the town board people, so that we could see that?
Oh, I'll send that to you. Yeah, it's actually, it's in SharePoint.
All right, thanks.
It's under, it's under the capital planning grants on SharePoint, under analysis, under municipal wastewater. You can edit that. I saved it in the right place.
So Joe, where are we in the process itself?
So beyond the grant application, we've received the updated engineering report from Lombardo Associates. We're reviewing this internally to make sure the changes reflect our, where we left off with public discussion. And we'll be ready to present back the updated report to the town board as soon as you see fit. So however the schedule allows. And the updated report does not include any new developments. It's just a reflection of where we left off with public comments and the consensus we came to as a town in terms of site selection, buildings to be included, treatment type. So there's no new information. It's just now a document that contains where we left off after we reviewed the initial draft.
Joe, are we on on a timetable that satisfies the needs of the school moving forward?
We are. At this time, yes. The most pressing deadlines are for the grant applications because we don't get to choose when those dates are. We're very fortunate that this year, New York State has been allocated or has allocated sort of a a record amount of funds for this type of infrastructure project. We're checking a lot of boxes in that it's infrastructure as well as wastewater and groundwater based in in its benefits. So we're really hoping that this may be the year of years to receive a substantial portion of of funding for this project. As soon as we pass these grant deadlines, we'll get back on focusing on advancing the the overall project schedule. As we last left off with the school, we're, we're all in agreement on the on the timeline and we're working towards a, towards a acceptable goal with that.
Hey.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Joe. Thanks very much. Okay, that's it on the agenda items. Go around the table, Meg. Nope. Jim? Why don't you go, everybody?
Okay.
I don't have anything. Cynthia, not much. Gordon reviewed the revenues, so they're down versus last year would be expected pandemic increasing interest rates. But they're still pretty healthy, one point three million to date versus two point three million last year. But one point three million on, if you looked at our historic trend line, that's a pretty darn good. Um, and the maps and kiosk projects are are on, they're just progressing. Should be shortly, we'll have new kiosks and some, on some of the properties. Stewardship, stewardship and maintenance plan. Tui and a few others are going to work on it so that, actually the entire committee for each of their properties work on it. So there's one document so that the projects that need to be done can be prioritized. They're going to invite Brian Sherman in so that a budget can be developed and all of this, you know, in anticipation of, in advance of, I call it the September one budget deadline. But, you know, I mean, it's flexible, but they're aware of it. And and also Chuck Kraus is going to contact Brian. You know, the the quail now, that's a whole, it adds a whole monkey wrench. So no mowing in Westneck Preserve until the fall, late in fall, so that we don't.
Nesting.
Kill them.
And and that's for nesting sites.
Right.
Hopefully, they're going to be nesting, so.
Yeah, exactly. And Jim, you're going to handle WMAC or?
Yes.
Okay. So that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you.
I I do. I, you know, I need a second. You have a slow state. Comp plan.
Oh, yeah.
But we have our public workshop on Monday, July eighteenth from seven to nine P M in Town Hall and on Zoom. So please zoom in. There'll be flyers out around town, so.
Four chapters.
And we're going to be going over four chapters. There are little business cards in the flyer you can take around. It has a QR code. It has the website. We're going to have all the chapters online. And there's also a comment section online. So if you read the chapter, then at the bottom, you can leave comments specific to that chapter. We would appreciate it if you do your comments chapter by chapter and not all the comments on the entire document on one. Because it'll be easier for us to sort and apply those comments accurately. So the website should be updated and ready to roll. And we look forward to seeing you Monday, July eighteenth at seven P M. Town Hall or on Zoom.
I mentioned housing. Housing is this Saturday. Housing is a workshop this Saturday from three to six.
For the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board to talk about the rep.
There you go.
And they're going to have.
Yeah.
They're going to have full presentations. They're going to have different stations with poster boards explaining things. They're going to have proposed concepts of what housing could look like on certain town owned properties, properties that we already own. So it would be a very great informational thing for people to come to so you can have a good idea of what they're thinking about, what kind of information is going into the housing plan that they're developing. That's what this whole thing is about, is getting the town's input on the housing plan that is currently being developed by the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board. So that is Saturday.
Three to six.
Three to five.
At the library.
At the library. You just opened? Okay, that's what I wrote down.
Yeah. So it's this weekend.
At the library.
Yep. All right, thanks. Jim, all right, very quickly, four reports, health and wellness, our bereavement groups are. I have two groups this summer, July, beginning of August, end of August, September. We handle about five to seven adults. We currently have six adults in the bereavement group. The two groups that we did last year, extremely, extremely successful. People still socialize from those groups now and they have created bonds and friendships with other people in the bereavement groups. So I'm very pleased about that. That was most of our meeting, talking about the blessings of of working with especially senior citizens that have lost a spouse, and and that has been very, very successful. Dearen Tick met on July sixth. We hadn't met in quite a while. Chairman Bevulakwa, Dr. Bevulakwa, went over the, a couple of things he emphasized to the, to the group about new, using town computers only and checking your emails twice a week. He talked about foil requests and the fact that nobody, a Dearen Tick committee should be using private emails. And Cody, who was a new member to the Dearen Tick, Miller, who was from Mashamack, needs a town computer which is being taken care of as we speak. Bo Payne's report, this is our third year without the use of four posters. It was suspended in March fifteenth, twenty twenty by the New York State D E C because we couldn't meet the requirements, obviously, with the four poster and get permission from all the people that live within the the radius of of the four poster device. I don't see that coming back at all unless New York State D E C changes its tune. We've been doing tick drags from two thousand eight to twenty twenty two. We still do them. And the samplings are are fairly consistent. We've been using both town properties and Mashamack Point. Mashamack Point is our control site. I'm looking at the data here. And if you, if you go all the way back to two thousand eight, we used to average at twelve different sites about four hundred forty nymphs, that's Lone Star nymphs at per site. Then when the program came in, you know, with the four posters, remember the Cornell program was from two thousand eight to two thousand ten? The numbers went from four forty to one fifty eight to eighteen. The numbers dropped dramatically, so people know that the four poster actually worked. And then it spiked a little bit after the, after the, it stopped fifty seven, eleven, twenty seven, twelve, twenty six, thirty five, thirty one, twenty, fifteen, eighteen. But now since twenty twenty, we don't use a four poster and we're starting to see the numbers come up. And it went from eighteen to eighty two to seventy four this year to ninety one. So there is, although it hasn't changed dramatically in the last three years, there is a growth. And 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 I can tell you firsthand, as being a photographer, spends a lot of time in the woods, that the number of ticks definitely is on the increase. And especially if a lone star is much more aggressive ticks than we've seen in the past. But again, we we do those tick drags for a reason to keep, you know, keep us honest about those numbers. Doxy cycling R Xs, we work with the Shelter Island Pharmacy, particularly we work with Suzanne. She's instrumental in getting us that information back in a final fashion, very accurate information. We've noticed the number of prescriptions has dropped slightly. There could be a number of reasons for that. At COVID, more people out here, more people in the outdoors, more people getting there. Maybe they're pharmaceuticals from elsewhere. Maybe there's less prescription of, of, you know, doctors prescribing, I don't know. But it's going to be a little bit difficult. Again, Suzanne still continues to work with pharmacies. So hopefully, we continue to be able to get accurate numbers. We talked a little bit about controlled burning. There are a number of private citizens here, property owners on Shelter Island. So far, there are twelve to fifteen property owners seeking permission to utilize the controlled burn on their properties. We need to simplify the regulatory process. We are working with the Shelter Island Fire Department a little bit. As you know, burning, we burn for three reasons. Number one, to control invasive species. Number two, to control tick density levels. And number three, for fire protection measures because we end up burning that the fuel that's out there and keeping that under control. Dr. Campbell mentioned that the burning should be during the months of December, January, February, March, during the winter. And we should avoid late spring, summer and 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 early fall. And that's the impact on wildlife and and people being out here. So if we're going to do controlled burns, they have to be during the winter months. Cody Marie Miller, who's our new member of the committee from Mashamack, has vast experience in burns. When she worked in her job in Florida, she was involved and participated in over three hundred old burns there. So she is pretty much of an expert when it comes to controlled burns. So I think Bo's going to work a little bit more closely with her. We're going to try to work with some of these property owners if we can and with the fire department for their training to try to see if we can get some controlled burning on some of these properties in the wintertime. As you know, the flyover was done late this year in March. We had a slight increase in deer density levels, not to panic, they're still within the realm. But the good thing about the flyovers is as we do track deer and where the concentration of deer are, we know where they are residing, so that helps in terms of planning a strategy and deer management to be able to go out, target particular areas. The biggest hurdle we have, obviously, is getting access to these properties. They're not, not stupid. They they know where they go and where they're safe and where they're not being squeezed. But Bo was gonna, and I'll use his term, the term was double down on trying to gain access to these properties. Because, and I commented saying, you know, one island, if we want to cut down on deer populations, we've got to work together. If large property owners refuse access and deer go to those properties during hunting season, it's impossible, it's virtually impossible. You know, we're very fortunate. We have access to Spess Mata, Mashamack, and we were able to access, you know, close to three thousand acres right there, you know, twenty six hundred acres, anyhow. We are going to go down and have a preseason hunting meeting this year with local hunters. We haven't had it since COVID, so it's been three years. I love the meeting because it brings everybody in the room. We normally get about fifteen to twenty local hunters here. They come up with some excellent suggestions that panned out in the past. So I love the fact that we're going back to those meetings. We'll have that probably in September, mid or late September, right before the start of hunting season. Good news is Julia Weisenberg, who is also a fairly new member, she's been on the committee for a couple of years now. She's, she's gone to school and she's done, she does programs at school. This year she did programs for the third and fourth grade and the fifth and sixth grade on May eighteenth with new materials. This year's program was an improvement over last year's program, which was reaffirmed by Dr. Dolter and the teachers. Next year, she would like to move the program to April, a little earlier in this year, if not, because there's a lot of squeeze at the end of the school year. She also is making more and more use of social media and recruiting new hunters. She would like to start an archery program for local students and and she's pursuing that. She has worked a lot with female, getting female hunters involved and working with women that would like to pursue hunting. She's got about a half a dozen people, a lot of them are off island, that come to the island and also hunt with her. Dr. Potter and Julia will be working together on developing posts for the social media. Dr. Campbell suggested that we make make more use of the regional tick born center at Southampton Hospital. And and particularly, the contact person there is Rebecca Young and gave us a contact number for her. So that was a good meeting. That was a good job, lots of participation. Last night's meeting, the C A C, we did not have any wetlands applications. We did talk about the C A C mission. We also talked about the town code. There are four areas in the town code that the the two co-chair people would like to review. Those are sections one twenty nine, which are on wetlands, eighty two, which is on irrigation code, eighty eight, which is on I I A systems, and sixty two, which is on no excavations within one hundred feet of the wetlands. and 62, which is on no excavations within 100 feet of the wetlands. I suggested to them, the committee that bought into it, let's just stick with one section per month. So our goal for the August meeting is to focus in on wetlands application and on section 129, particularly taking a look at the definitions there and just focusing on that one thing. We also talked about the use of pesticides, which we're going to. Dan Clark, who's an excellent new addition to that committee, is very concerned about that as well. And we need to coordinate our efforts better with, with, with several other town committees.
W A C.
You know, W A C. And we also need to coordinate a little bit with the green options people as well and, 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 you know, with that. We also talked about the Green Expo on August 20th, that we will participate from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. And we talked about old beach trees, a concern from Dan Clark. He said, if you go over to the, the Deering Harbor and you go through the Hunts property, there's a massive problem with the old beach trees that are dying off in there.
Tim tells us that there's a disease.
It's a disease issue. It can, and it can be handled, but needs to be, needs to be looked at. We did talk a little bit about the irrigation systems and educating off island companies who are installing these new systems need a permit. A lot of people are just going in and installing irrigation systems without getting a permit or notifying anybody. We need to tighten up on that as well. Roxanne, who is a new member of the committee, has worked on educational pieces and writing for the reporter. She's already put an article in, but we're working on our next, our next report as well. And we congratulated the, the Clark family for their quail program, which turned out to be a, you know, a nice success. So that basically was it. We went through the WMAC and I think just in terms of time, I'm going to save that one for next week because I won't be at any meetings this week because I'm going away to New Mexico. So I have a completely report on last night's meetings, which I will, we will make sure that we get Dot's office because she needs to know upfront right away. But otherwise I'll report to the town board on that meeting from last night. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Stephen, you have anything first?
Uh, no.
Bobby, you have anything? That's a no. Julie, Julia, or anything from the papers?
I'm fine. Thank you.
All good. Thanks, Jerry.
Hey, any audience participation? I don't see any hands up. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session.
Special meeting.
And we have a special meeting. Do we have the form to sign?
That's a good question. Doc's got that for us.
Do we need a special meeting to approve these resolutions that we heard today, all these permit applications?
Not all, just the, and then other things. Stephen, on the first one for Cornell Cooperative Extension, did you add in the language we need for the noise exemption?
Yeah, I think we have it. I think Meg gets a handle on it. We wrote.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, it's the first one.
What did I do?
First one for the Cornell fundraiser?
Yes, I did. I amended that.
You can follow that.
Okay.
Wow, the signature is the quickest signature of a bad guy.
All right. Whereas pursuant to chapter 33 of the Shelter Island Town Code, Cornell Cooperative Extension of Suffolk, 3690 Cedar Beach Road, Southhold has requested permission as per application dated June 6th, 2022, to hold a charitable event on a private property the Rams head in to raise money for Cornell's aquaculture program featuring local oyster farmers with live music, which will be closed to the public throughout the duration of the event. Only invited and R S V Ps on July 16th, 2022 to include a 92-6 noise exemption. Therefore, be it resolved that the town board does hereby approve permission for said event pending application fee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So moves, which is a move. Am I going with the order that they just gave them?
This is.
Yes.
Oh, I have, yeah, Tom Spodak, yes. All right. That's the nothing order this. Give them out. Okay, so you want this, this one right here? Spodak, yeah.
All right. Whereas pursuant to chapter 33, Shelter Island Town Code, Thomas Spodak and Amelia Lee Sleep, Leslie?
Lyle.
Lylee's? Lylee, I guess. I'm sorry. Thomas is Spodak.
I don't know if that's heard.
Permission as of application dated June 1st, 2022, to hold a ceremony of marriage at Taylor's Island on July 16th, 2022. And whereas the required fees of $100 application fee, the $100 compliance fee have been submitted. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board does hereby approve permission for said marriage ceremony. So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Be resolved that the town board of the town of Shelter Island hereby approves the retainer agreement between the town of Shelter Island and the groups of Lamb and Vanoski, Ogol and Vesunder, and Messina Perillo Hill for legal services rendered, for legal services rendered and to be rendered with Supreme Court action in connection with index number 609723-22. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the supervisors hereby authorized and directed to expend the sum of $1,000 from the 2022 A 1010.497 Town Board Professional Services account to chronic surveyors, T O Box 909, Southfold, New York, for surveying and mapping services at 69 North Berry Road. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Whereas the town has created a community housing fund to serve as a repository for monies to be used exclusively in connection with creation of community housing opportunities on Shelter Island. Whereas prior to the expenditure of said monies, a housing plan, the plan must be developed and adopted. Whereas the town board created the Community Housing Fund Advisory Board to make recommendations on the plan. Whereas the town board issued R F Ps for a consultant to prepare the plan. Whereas Nelson Pope Voorhees, N P V, a well-respected environmental land use and planning firm submitted a proposal. Whereas the town board has elected to retain N P V to prepare the plan for a fee of up to $35,500. Now therefore be it resolved that the town supervisors hereby authorized to execute any and all documents in connection with the retaining of Nelson Pope Voorhees to complete the housing plan for the town of Shelter Island for a fee of up to $35,500. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's an order.
Whereas the Suffolk County Water Quality Protection and Restoration Program, W Q P R P, provides grant funding on a competitive basis for water quality projects defined in Article 12, Section 2B of the Suffolk County Charter. And whereas the town of Shelter Island intends to submit a proposal to the Suffolk County W Q P R P Review Committee, which has established a deadline of July 20th, 2022 for proposals. And whereas the proposed project will provide for capital costs associated with construction of the Island Center wastewater treatment system. And whereas the proposed project will reduce the flow of pollutants and concern of concern to the sole source aquifer and surface waters of the town. And whereas the Suffolk County W Q P R P Program provides grant funding in support of selected projects and requires 50% matching share. And whereas the town will submit a grant application to the W Q P R P Program for an amount of $250,000 and provide matching funds of the same amount. And whereas the county grant is reimbursed based up to the grant award amount. Now therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shelter Island hereby states its support of the Island Center wastewater treatment system. And be it further resolved that the town will support the required minimum of 50% matching funds toward the total project cost supported by the Suffolk County W Q P R P. For the project received funding from the county anticipated to be up to 250,000. And be it further resolved that the town will be responsible for funding any project cost incurred above the county grant amount. And be it further resolved that the town board authorizes the supervisor or their designee to sign any and all necessary documents pertaining to the project, including but not limited to an intermunicipal agreement subject to review and approval of the town attorney to participate in the above referenced program. So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
State grant, whereas New York State Water Quality Improvement Program has made funds available for the implementation of projects that directly improve water quality. And whereas the W Q I P Program supports wastewater treatment improvement program, projects to construct municipal systems to serve municipal properties with inadequate onsite septic systems. And whereas the town is planning to establish a wastewater treatment system to serve the island center. And whereas the W Q I P provides support for eligible capital costs and requires 25% matching share based on the grant award amount. And whereas the town will submit a grant application requesting up to $2,500, $2,500,000 and providing up to $625,000 in local matching funds. Therefore be it resolved that the town board of the, of the town of Shelter Island hereby authorizes the supervisor to execute any and all documents pertaining to the New York State Water Quality Improvement Program grant application submitted for the Island Center wastewater treatment system. So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Whereas pursuant to a recommendation from the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, town board is desirous of purchasing lots 4, 5, 6, 8, and 9 of the final subdivision plot Nelson White Estate as a 50% partner with the County of Suffolk, passive recreational use. And now therefore be it resolved, the town board of the town of Shelter Island hereby sets a public hearing for July 26th, 2022 at 6:28 P M prevailing time on the potential fee title acquisition with the County of Suffolk as a 50% partner of 20.1 acres between South Fanatic Road and West Net Creek Shelter Island, New York, more specifically identified as Suffolk County Tax Map 722-2, lots 5.11, 5.12, 5.13, 5.15, and 5.16. And be it further resolved that the purchase price of this subject property is $11,100,000 and the town's contribution will be 550, $5,550,000 to be paid with community preservation funds. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the supervisors hereby authorized and directed to credit the reimbursement check in the amount of $6,500 received from the nature conservancy to the 2022 A 3510.498 Deer Reduction Management Account. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that ends the special meeting. Now I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a C P F acquisition and also collective bargaining pursuant to Article 15 Civil Service.
But you may want to ask if the public has any comments.
I did that already.
No, no, in the part.
Oh.
Oh, for the singular.
The special meeting.
Any discussion on?
Any public comments?
Any public comment on the special meeting? Okay, I'm going to take that as a no and.
Yeah, just adding to the list of executive sessions. One is a professional services contract negotiation. And please keep Gordon Gooding in the. Executive session to start.
Thanks, everybody.